Good evening, everyone. I'll call the City Council to order at 8:00 on Monday, June 14th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, for this council meeting, we are all here. All councilors are back in the chamber for the first time since March 9th, 2020. Four hundred and sixty-one days. So, congratulations, and it really looks good seeing all you here in the chamber today. Seriously, I mean, it's been a long time coming and looking forward to a productive meeting, so thank you and glad to have you all back. There are sixteen items on this evening's agenda. I don't have to ask the clerk to call a roll to confirm attendance. But for this particular meeting, we're starting off a little differently. Just want to mention the presentation of the city scholarships. Normally, in other times, we would have the students here and the mayor would give the presentation, so I'm just going to go through it on behalf of the mayor and thank the mayor for his effort. The mayor's worked hard with the water bills and sewer bills. You can check off the box down the bottom to donate, and it's been, since I've been on the council, they've been providing scholarships, so kudos to the mayor and encourage that. But I'm pretty proud to announce, we have four Marlboro High School seniors and two Aspid Valley seniors that are going on to further their education that received scholarships. Pretty impressive and pretty exciting. So let me read the Marlboro High School seniors. So Taylor Barber, Brooke Bishop, Amelia Carlman, and Allison Trin. So congratulations, they're going to Endicott, Worcester State, Boston University, one's still working on one, which is fine. And then for Aspid Valley, we have McKenna Noble and Ryan Fatigue. They're going to Palm Beach, Atlanta U. I think I wouldn't mind going to Atlanta U right now. And St. Anselm. So some great colleges, so some great students, so congratulations to the students and thank you to the mayor and to all the folks that check off the box and send in a little something with their water and sewer bill. You make this all possible, so well done, so thank you very much. So with that, I will ask the clerk to read Agenda Item Number One.
Minutes of the City Council Meeting, June 7th, 2021.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tenera.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion's made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, by a show of hands. Is there any, all in favor of accepting and placing on file? And I will call the votes, it is 11-0 to accept and place on file. Agenda Item Number Two.
Communication from Councilors Ossing and Tenera regarding the municipal aggregation, June 2021 update.
Counselor Tenera.
Thank you. Just a few notes on the municipal aggregation. So we've got a couple of items. So Marlboro residents, electricity users participating in the municipal aggregation program saved over $621,000 in the first quarter of 2021. The Inspire contract has saved Marlboro residential electricity users participating in the program over 2.7 million since the inception in November 2019. The municipal aggregation program has saved all users over 7 million since program since 2007. And the municipal aggregation program continues to save Marlboro residents money on their electric bills. So with that, I will make a motion to accept and place on file.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communications. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counselor Wagner.
Just had a question. Can you remind us when the contract expires? What date is it? Do we know?
Yes, so the contract with Inspire expires January 2024 with the meter reads that take place on that day, so we still have a couple more years to go.
And I'm very appreciative, and I appreciate that this is in place and appreciative of the money that's being saved for the citizens and the residents of Marlboro, and just wanted to note, I'm very excited about Vineyard Wind coming online and to keep that in the back of our minds that eventually that is going to become something to be thinking about, you know, if it's eventually, we can also save money and get local wind would be wonderful for the city.
That's a great point, Counsel Wagner, and I'll make sure at our next municipal aggregation meeting, we discuss that aspect as well, be planning for that. Any other comments or questions on the motion? On the motion to accept and place on file the communication, all those in favor? Opposed? It is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Three.
Communication from the mayor regarding a transfer request in the amount of $213,852, which moves funds from PEG fund to IT equipment to fund an upgrade of our current permitting software, Acela, to OpenGov.
Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to refer to the Finance Committee, please.
Motion's made and seconded to refer to the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask, no, I will not ask. Little habits to break. All those in favor of referring to the Finance Committee? It is approved to send to the Finance Committee, 11 to 0. Agenda Item Number Four.
Communication from City Solicitor Jason Grossfield regarding proposed zoning map amendment to the results way mixed-use overlay district and the proposed revisions to Chapter 650, Section 33 of the zoning code in proper legal form, Order Number 21-108216C.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to have this moved with Agenda Item Number 12.
Motion made and seconded to move Agenda Item Four down to Agenda Item Number 12. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? It is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Five.
Communication from Assistant Solicitor Jason Peaks regarding a request for approval of a freestanding sign for mobile at 656 Boston Post Road East in proper legal form, Order Number 21-108275.
Counselor Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to have this moved with Number 14.
Motion made and seconded to move Agenda Item Five down to Agenda Item 14. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? It is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Six.
Communication from Code Enforcement Officer Ethan Lippett regarding a request for approval of two flat wall signs for local routes, 910 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside District.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if it's appropriate to have some communication. I had intended to refer this to Urban Affairs so that we could talk about the fact that the letter from Mr. Lippett states that there's no master sign plan. Looking at the special permit, there's really no reference to a master sign plan. That's in the actual Wayside District language, so I'm not sure that they're aware of one or that for this particular site, there's really a need for one. If the sense of the committee is there's no need to refer it, I guess that's what I want to know. Is there a preference? Can I sort of?
Is there any preference that they want to see it go to committee? Well, since Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think that this doesn't necessarily require to go to committee. I was thinking about the same issue, but, you know, the signs are appropriate for location, they're not overly outrageous as far as what they look like, so I don't, I myself, and I'll leave it to the other committee members as far as expressing their opinions, but I don't see any issues with this.
Anyone else? Counsel Roby, what would you like to do?
As you stated, one to me is a wayfaring sign, just to let people know from the building and all the other things where exactly they are, and the other is a sign on the side where the entrance, there will be another sign, I guess, put somewhere in the front as soon as they figure that out. So with the conversations and lack of, I'm going to move to approve the two flat wall signs for local routes.
Motion made and seconded to approve the two signs for local routes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? That is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Seven.
Communication from various residents regarding opposition to the application for site plan review from Attorney Brian Fogg on behalf of Wohoho to construct a mixed-use project within the Marlboro Village District, 28 South Bolton Street, Order Number 21-108277.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and place on file the communications.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communications. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All is opposed? It is approved, 11-0 to accept and place on file. Agenda Item Number Eight.
Communication from Sunbury Companies of Minute and Militia regarding a temporary sign placement at the corner of Route 20 and Hager Road for the 2021 Colonial Fair and muster at the Wayside Inn.
Counsel Tenera.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's a letter in here regarding the need for this, but they're just a one-day event, so they're just putting up a directional sign, so motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sign request. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think the other point needs to be made is they need to know that the city clerk was actually changed. Not Lisa Thomas anymore.
Well noted, Counsel Dusset. Any other discussion on the motion to approve the sign? Seeing none, all those in favor? It is approved, 11-0. Agenda Item Number Nine.
Application for a special permit from Edgewood Entertainment LLC to operate indoor golf simulators in a bar area in an existing building at 229 Boston Post Road West.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to refer to Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for July 19th, and to advertise.
Motion made and seconded to refer to the Urban Affairs Committee, set a public hearing for July 19th, and to advertise. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All is opposed? It is approved to send to Urban, set a public hearing for July 19th, and to advertise. Agenda Item Number 10.
Minutes of Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Mr. President. Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to accept and place on file the minutes of the Boards, Commissions, and Committees.
Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is approved, 11-0. Number 11.
Claims.
Mr. President.
Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Motion to send the claims to legal.
Motion made and seconded to send the claims to legal department. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? It is approved, 11-0. Reports of committee. Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Finance Committee met this evening, June 14th, 2021, at 6:30 p.m. We had seven items on the agenda this evening. The first item was Order Number 21-108303, Proposed City Code Amendment to Chapter 67, Finance, Section 26.1, Departmental Revolving Funds to Establish a Water and Sewer Revolving Fund and to amend the spending purposes for the Public Safety Revolving Fund. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, to recommend approval. Motion carried five to zero. Second item was Order Number 21-108304A, That no more than $350,000 shall be expended from the Parks and Recreation Revolving Fund during the fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the City Council and the mayor. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, to approve. It carried five to zero. Next item was Order Number 21-108304B, That no more than $120,000 shall be expended from Public Safety Revolving Fund during the fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the City Council and the mayor. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, it carried five to zero. Next item was Order Number 21-108304C, That no more than $70,000 shall be expended from the City Council on Aging Revolving Fund during the fiscal year 2022 unless authorized, otherwise authorized by the City Council or by the mayor. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, it carried five to zero. Next item was Order Number 21-108304D, That no more than $500,000 shall be expended from Proposed Water and Sewer Revolving Fund during the fiscal year 2022 unless otherwise authorized by the City Council and the mayor. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair, to recommend approval. It carried five to zero. Next item was Order Number 21-108305, Communication from Mayor Vigent requesting a transfer from the Department of Public Works in the amount of $2,356,437.77, and the City Auditor in the amount of $55,475, totaling an amount of $2,411,912.77 to fund various accounts for the remainder of FY 2021 as outlined in the enclosed transfer sheet. Motion by Counsel Oram, seconded by the Chair. Recommendation carried five to zero. Last item on the agenda this evening was Order Number 21-108313, MEDC FY 2022 Operating Budget in the Amount of $546,738. Motion by Counsel Dumas, seconded by the Chair, to recommend approval. It carried five to zero. Meeting adjourned at 7:18 p.m. That's the end of my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Any other reports? Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Council Personnel Committee met earlier tonight at 7:30. All councilors were present in the chamber. We had four items on the agenda. First one was Order Number 18270, The Appointment of Mary Jo Narakis to Licensing Board for a Six-Year Term Date for Council Confirmation. She was not here in person because we already interviewed her. It was recommended for approval for the term to expire 6/1/2022. Per the solicitor, it was voted 2 to 1 with Council Landers opposed. Order Number 18271, Reappointment of Gregory Matracas and David Bouvier to the License Board for a Six-Year Term, Respect from the Date of Council Confirmation. It was recommended to approve to the term to expire for Mr. Matracas at 6/1/2024 and Mr. Bouvier, 6/1/2026. That vote was 2 to 1 with Council Landers opposing again. Then we had Item Number Three, Order Number 18315, Reappointment to Conservation Commission Karen Pakwin for the term to expire May 5th, 2023, John Sakrin for a term expire March 7th, 2022, and Ellen White for a term to expire March 2nd, 2024. Per Counsel Dusset's recommendation, seconded by the Chair, was recommended to approve, and that was voted 3 to 0. Last item on the agenda was Order Number 18316, The Reappointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission of Robert F. Case, Mr. William Doherty, and Mr. Mark Vitell for three-year terms respectively to expire on April 2nd, 2024. It was already come to the conclusion that that Parks and Rec were staggered, and so we all came to a vote, and it was motion by Counsel Dusset, seconded by the Chair, and it was approved 3 to 0, and we adjourned at 7:54 p.m.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Any other reports of committees? Any announcements? You don't want to announce to keep it on people's mind?
Yes, Climate Resilience Committee is scheduled for the 29th.
Okay. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. Urban Affairs is meeting Thursday. I've lost track of.
June 17.
What day it even is. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other reports of committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 12.
Order Number 21-108216C, Proposed Zoning Map Amendment to the Results Way Mixed Use Overlay District and Proposed Revisions to Chapter 650, Section 33 of the Zoning Code. The recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of committee, which is to approve. I will note that the vote was 3 to 2 with Counsel Landers and myself opposed, and I will remain opposed this evening. Thank you.
Motion made and seconded to approve the zoning change as recommended by the Urban Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Also, I know that this is a zoning change, so it has to go through the four stages. I would like to ask for a roll call vote, please.
Absolutely. Any discussion? Any discussion? Counsel Roby, I would just like to make a statement on it. Would you mind let me make a statement and take the chair?
Counsel Ossing.
Thank you, Madam President. So just a couple of quick notes, you know, on the importance of this particular zoning change. So this zoning change provides the council with a unique opportunity to shape the future development on that site. This zoning change does not allow any building, right? It's the first step in a three-step process that requires council approval. Again, it only expands the opportunity for the council to influence and control development on that site. That's it. It just gives us another tool in our toolbox. Development on that site will require a master plan and a development agreement that both require a two-thirds vote. Right? The City Council will be able to address mitigation with the zoning change that is not currently available in the limited industrial zoning that's there now. The mitigation and associated tax revenues will continue to ensure the city maintains taxes at a steady and stable level that our residents have come to appreciate. The zoning change will position the city to continue to grow as a life science leader in the Commonwealth. The Planning Board has approved the zoning change. Urban Affairs has approved the zoning change, and I encourage my fellow councilors to look favorably on approving this zoning change. Any other discussion? Counsel Dusset.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also will be supporting this. I think that this is an opportunity for developing an area that has been, it is a marquee location in the city, if not in the region. Anyone who's been up in that area, you have beautiful views of, you know, the western part of the state, and, you know, I keep on making comments that basically, I was working at 200 Forest Street when the current buildings were under construction, I could see them being built in the back, you know? The problem is basically, high-tech has pretty much changed its dynamics, and we're now trying to, you know, get new technology, biotech, within the area, you know? And I think that there is a big opportunity for biotech manufacturing in that particular site, similar to how things have been developed in California Avenue and Framingham and that part of the development. So, you know, when those organizations, when those companies come into those types of sites, they tend to stay there for an extended amount of time because they invest within the region. There's a capital investment that, it's not just about depreciating over time, it's also about basically, you know, moving those types of, you know, the raw mechanisms are just tough to, once you build, you want to depreciate them as much as you can and just not rebuild them someplace else. So I think it's important that we consider this as being a real future for how the city's going to be looked at for a biotech within the state, and I think we can really take a leadership role by supporting this development. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dusset. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing this is in Ward 3, I had a lot of apprehensives going into this. I have a lot of concerns. Obviously, it's going to be a bigger project, but I believe that we need to take the next step. I like the idea of having that security so we can actually control what goes in there, we can identify if there's any traffic issues and have a further debate. What concerns me is that if we do not vote this, then they can build whatever they want to build there under industrial, and I'm pretty sure that they're pretty ready to go and develop what they want, because obviously, the bottom line, they have a mortgage to pay regarding the land. Having said that, I'm interested in moving forward to see what we can actually control and what we decide to build there, moving forward. As I said before, I was very apprehensive, but I think in order to move along, something's going to be built there, so I'd rather have the control with the master plan and really hammer out all the details so we can make a decision as to what's going in. My fear is not having that control and then just letting things, Pandora's Box being opened. It's, something's going to be built there, and with Ward 3 being highly desirable and highly developed and with the potential, because as Counsel Landers said, it has the most land, and which means it's going to be the most developed, so I like the idea of having to control that. As much as I don't want government to control everything, but I have to look out for the constituents and I have to be concerned about what's going in there. So having said that, I'm interested to see what's going to be built there, and I will support this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Dumas. Any other discussion? Counsel Anders.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm definitely supporting this tonight, Mr. President. Last week, I was just a little hesitant, and I thought we were acting too quickly. But I think this is a great project for the city, and I think the key is control, and I think it's the beginning of something great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Anders. Anyone else? Counsel Perlman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a couple of questions. My biggest concern is the rate of the housing and the timeline of this project. I don't know if anyone can speak to, I know in the section E here, it says up to 350 dwelling units, and I thought it was only 100, and both are listed here, and I was curious also, if we do approve this, how quickly do we receive the master plan and the other stages of the project? That, to me, is still a little unclear, given the rate of development that's already happening in Ward 3.
So if I can, so the 350 is what we've already approved on the other side of the street, so that's Sub District 1. So that, that really doesn't have anything to do with what the applicant's requesting. The applicant's requesting Sub District 2, which is just a limit of up to 100 housing units. That, that's it. So what, so that's why, it's really two pieces, the existing one, and what they've done is mirrored it and now put it on the other side. All right? And then the timeline for master plan and development agreement, that's when the developer sends it to us, and as Counsel Dumas adequately pointed out, that gives us the shot. They'll tell us what they want to do, and we'll tell them, A, whether we agree with it, and what changes we'd want to make, what mitigation the city may want to need to accommodate those changes. So that would be the next step. But again, all this does is gives us an option that they can go limited, or they can go via this Results Way Mixed Use Overlay District. Hope that helps.
Yes, that's helpful. I'm just concerned about the rate of development in this area, and I imagine with everything else going on, to add more development at this time would be a little bit too much for Ward 3, so I wanted to make sure that we were aware of the timeline. So I think it's important to have those council controls, and they would have to keep coming down to us, and I think it's important that we, as councilors, are really eyeing those limitations. Otherwise, as we've seen before, right developers can just do whatever they want, so it's, the council oversight is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Perlman. Anyone? Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, it looks like I'm going to be the solo no vote, and I think I started that way to begin with. I still have the objection to the housing. I still object to the fact that they have added on to a development or a change of the code that we spent a lot of time on, and they can just piggyback on because they happen to be across the way. I think some of the comments that have been made are maybe some confusion. Once we approve this tonight, what they can do, other than what they could do by right, they can do a lot of things by right, but there's a lot of them that we decided to have specified in this document. Anything, if you look at the code, that's by right, even if it's not listed in here, they can still do, if it's in the LI and Industrial Districts. So be reminded about that. And, and all of those things they can do, we will approve a development agreement and we will approve a master plan. The master plan will show where those buildings go, but once, and once that plan is in place, that's the two-thirds vote. So yes, we can have that, but they could do those regardless, they already have a master, they already have a site plan that's been approved by the Site Plan Committee for Buildings. So if we do nothing tonight, which obviously is not going to happen, there is already a site plan to do the development that they want to do. So there's a few exceptions that we put in here they can't do, some things that were in anyway, but I think that everything that they wanted to do, other than the housing and the restaurant, they could do with just leaving the code alone. So I stand by my objection, and it looks like it's going to pass, so once it does, we will see what happens with the next one. And I think, just to remind or to make it clear to the counselor that asked the question, it does say that the property owner, the master plan and the development agreement happen with their first application for approval of a site plan or a special permit. So I'm sure they want to move quickly, so I'm sure we're going to see those documents pretty shortly. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Roby. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? On the motion to approve the zoning change, I will ask the clerk, oh, actually, so the motion's been made and seconded, so we will now go through the four stages. So all those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second reading, and this will be a roll call vote. Counsel Landers.
Yes.
Counsel Ossing.
Yes.
Counsel Navin.
Yes.
Counsel Oram.
Yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Yes.
Counsel Irish.
Yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Yes.
Counsel Perlman.
No.
Counsel Dumas.
Yes.
Counsel Roby.
No.
Nine in favor to oppose. Vote was nine in favor to oppose. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Wagner.
Yes.
Counsel Landers.
Yes.
Counsel Irish.
Yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Yes.
Counsel Oram.
Yes.
Counsel Roby.
No.
Counsel Ossing.
Yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Yes.
Counsel Perlman.
No.
Counsel Navin.
Yes.
Nine in favor to oppose. The vote was nine in favor to oppose to enroll. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please. Counsel Ossing.
Yes.
Counsel Tanara.
Yes.
Counsel Dumas.
Yes.
Counsel Landers.
Yes.
Counsel Navin.
Yes.
Counsel Oram.
Yes.
Counsel Wagner.
Yes.
Counsel Roby.
No.
Counsel Irish.
Yes.
Counsel Dusset.
Yes.
Counsel Perlman.
No.
Nine in favor to oppose. Motion to have the passage ordained is approved, nine in favor, two opposed. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Hearing none. The zoning change is approved. Agenda item number 13.
Order Number 21-1008266, proposed rezoning of land at 290 Hudson Street identified as Map 43, Parcel 38, from Limited Industrial to Residence A3. Recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve pending the recommendation of the Planning Board.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to move to suspend the rules to ask for an agenda item to be added.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. All in favor, I don't have to do a roll call. All in favor of suspending the rules. It is approved, 11-0, to suspend the rules. Counsel Roby.
Thank you. The City Council members were sent a copy of the letter from the Planning Board with their recommendation to approve the zoning change. So with that in hand, I would move the recommendation of committee which was to approve the zoning change from Limited Industrial to Residence A3 for 290 Hudson Street.
Before we do that, motion to accept.
Oh, I'm, motion to accept and place on file the communication from the Planning Board.
Yes. Motion made and seconded to accept and place on file the communication from the Planning Board that endorses or that approves the Hudson Street rezoning change. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? It is approved, 11-0. Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, move to recommend the, move the recommendation of committee which, which was to approve the rezoning of land at 290 Hudson Street.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the rezoning of the land on Hudson Street. Is there any discussion on the motion? Counsel Irish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Chair, Madam Chair of Urban and the Urban Committee, Planning Board for, for all the work that's been going on into this rezoning. I'd also like to thank Code Enforcement Officer Pamela Wilderman, City Engineer DePercio, and City Solicitor, Assistant City Solicitor Peaks, with their help giving me the, the historical background of the zoning, and it went rather smoothly, and I appreciate all the help and support. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Irish. Is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the zoning change? Seeing none, this is an ordinance change, so we'll go through the four stages. All those in favor of suspending the first reading and approving the second, signify 11-0. All those in favor of the passage to be enrolled, all those in favor, signify 11-0. All those in favor of the passage to be ordained, all those in favor, 11-0. Is there any objection to passage in one evening? Counsel Irish, you going to object? You're all set? Seeing no objection, the zoning change is approved, 11-0. Item 15. 14. Yep, thank you.
Order Number 21-1008275, request to replace existing sign panels on the freestanding sign on Mobile 656 Boston Post Road East within the Wayside Zoning District. The recommendation of the Urban Affairs Committee is to approve.
Counsel Roby.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move the recommendation of the committee which is to approve the LED sign, special, the LED sign.
Motion made and seconded to approve the sign. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed. Sign is approved, 11 in favor and none opposed. Now, Agenda Item 15.
Order Number 21-1008221, proposed ordinance amendment to the Code, Chapter 270, Building and Site Development, Article 5, fences relative to Section 19, permit required in addition to Section 24 easements and right-of-way. Recommendation of the Legislative and Legal Affairs Committee is to approve as amended. This legal ad was ordered advertised at the June 7th, 2021 City Council meeting. Advertisement was published on today, excuse me, on June 11th, 2021, and action cannot be taken until June 21st, 2021 City Council meeting to comply with the 10-day period.
Counsel Tanara.
Can't listen that fast. Okay. Motion to postpone to the June 21st City Council meeting.
Motion made and seconded to postpone to the June 21st City Council meeting. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none.